Hi, this is everyone. This is the September fifteen two thousand twenty-two meeting of the Rockport Planning Board. In addition to me and attendance are board members are Tom Mekus and Harry Korsland. Peter Cutner is absent. We have three members who we do have a quorum. We'll begin the meeting with public comment. If any member of the public has any comment, they'd like to direct to a planning matter. This is one of two times they can do it. The second time is at the end of the meeting. And so we'll open the meeting initially and we'll see one hands raised there. But yeah, you can, if anybody has their hands raised, Robert, you can recognize them.
Michael Shaffey, you're unmuted. Okay, just name your name and address, please.
Michael Caffey, Sixty South Street in Rockport. And I'm, can you hear me okay?
Yeah, we can, I can hear.
All right, I just wanted to apologize to the board for missing the last two meetings. And I didn't realize how things worked. I was expecting to get a notice because the way we left it seemed like there was a lot of research that had to be done by the board and I didn't know if you had enough time to do it. So I'm sorry for any misconceptions for not even thinking to check the agendas for the past two meetings, but I did call the office later this morning. I talked to Mary. She got our project reopened and I'll be on the October sixth meeting. So again, please accept my apologies. I'm a little naive in all these wheelings and dealings. So I'll see you all then. Okay, that's basically all I wanted to say.
That's fine. Yeah, on October sixth. Thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna sign off.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
I wish I were naive.
Yeah.
And from Toby Arsenian.
Okay.
Thank you. Toby Arsenian, ninety-five Granite Street. At the town meeting, you all witnessed the great interest in John Penelosa's petition article to restructure the town's taxing authority. And it was roundly defeated. I too voted against it. I think much of what John Penelosa said was right on the mark, not all of it, but much of it. And certainly the concerns are real. There are concerns that your board has the future of the town, the price of real estate, and consequently, who might be able to live here. So I would say that his proposal was swatting flies with a sledgehammer and there would be far too much collateral damage. But perhaps something, not perhaps, definitely something needs to be done. But what? And you're the planning board and you could say that it's not your business, that it's purely financial. But if you read the charge of the planning board out of the code of bylaws, it's fairly wide. You know, what you could see as your concerns doesn't give you any direct powers. But there it is, you're bailiwick, no doubt about it. So if this was roundly rejected, there may be other possibilities of raising money and restructuring the taxes that have been tried in other places. And I put that to the Board of Selectmen at their meeting was Tuesday night and was ignored as usual. But if you put it to them, they might take an interest. And indeed, they've got ongoing, they're going to hire with, I believe, grant money, some state outfit, the Donahoe Institute, to look into the town's long-range financial planning. And you could wade into that and suggest to Mitch Vieira, who I do believe will be writing whatever the specs are for the contract for that, that, you know, looking at tax structures and how they would affect the the future of the town and who might live here would certainly be an appropriate thing to look into. Would you consider doing that?
Well, you know, I mean, obviously, anything's up for consideration, but without, you know, what, what you're talking about is very, very preliminary. So what apparently hasn't even gone out or an RFP, it sounds like. So we're we'll see what happens, Toby, you know?
Well, it seems to me that that is the very point where it's very vague, that that something more specific might be suggested as a field of endeavor or inquiry. You know, financial, long-range financial planning, which is what that's to deal with, could mean almost anything. And, you know, the more it could be narrowed down, or not narrowed down, excuse me, I misspoke, but the more that could be specified as fields to look into, I would think the better. How could it hurt?
I can't answer your question. I don't know if anybody else on the board can answer it, but answer that. I mean, we're, we're, we're having a challenge us doing planning. You know, kind of zoning changes, as you witnessed on May sixteen. We had a challenge, change zoning to allow for more housing. So, you know, we're, we're kind of focused on that right now, but that doesn't mean that point in the near future, we won't change our focus. That's that's all that we can say at this point. Okay, well, thank you.
Jason, is it possible that MAPC would have dealt with this issue at some point and have some suggestions?
Financial aspects? I, yeah.
I doubt. Okay.
I don't think that's in there, Baileywood.
Okay, that's our resource for most things, so.
Okay, any other public comment? All right, we'll go to the next item on the agenda, which is the gold standard properties A and R. Someone here on behalf of Gold Standard Properties. Nobody's here.
I don't believe so, Jason. It seems like everybody else on the call is part of the ad hoc water committee.
Well.
Does this change our timeframe for?
Unfortunately. But we, we always require that an applicant be present. We don't, we don't deal with applications that are just dropped at our doorstep and, you know, and I had some questions anyway. So take a look at something here. I don't want, I don't want the twenty-one days to go by. This is
So if we don't, if we don't hear it, if we don't hear it, then the twenty-one days don't start, correct?
Oh, no, actually, I would say the twenty-one days, this was filed with the
filing date.
Date is September one. So today's the fifteenth. So we can't wait to our next meeting because it'll be more than twenty-one days. And I would say that we have two options with this, either approve it or deny it with leave to resubmit. And anybody have any thoughts on that?
I'm happy to move to resubmit without prejudice.
Yeah, I would say to keep within our twenty-one days. We, I don't understand people who, I mean, you know, granted, we just had one, one of them tell us about it, but people who file things and then don't follow showing up at the meeting. I mean, they, they really have to do that. So I would say let's, I would suggest a motion to deny this at this point without with lead to reapply. And take it from there.
Okay, so moved.
Seconded.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote. Tom?
Hi.
Harry?
Hi.
And I'll vote in favor too. We'll let the applicant know that it'll be it'll be on the, if they want to resubmit it, it'll be on the agenda. I mean, as far as we know, you know, they might have filed this and then changed their mind. You know, I don't, I have no idea what they're doing. So and since we're stuck in a box here, we can't wait any longer. We have to deny it. So that's what we're doing. And we'll let the applicant know that. Okay, that was pretty fast. So let's go to the next item. I sent everybody an updated notice of public hearing just for you to look at before it goes out to the, to the newspaper, which will be actually tomorrow. Basically, what I did is I took the notice that we had done last January of two thousand twenty-two. I revised it to do a couple of things. To add some things and also to eliminate, obviously, all the matters that, that were heard on May sixteenth that that are not part of this notice. I think I covered it all. I just gave it to everyone to look at. If, if for some reason, if you haven't looked at it yet, please, please look at it. I don't want to be a one man band here. And if there's something I've missed, let me know like tomorrow morning because I've got it. We've got to get it to you know, to the GDT tomorrow if by, by the afternoon. So I'd have to add or take something off, but it's it's pretty straightforward. I think we covered it all. I did add, like I said, a few things that made them a little more specific than we're in the notice back in January. But since basically this is the same, pretty much the same, although there are some differences. Notices was before I've left it the same. So the other thing I wanted to talk about with this is we, one of the things that we did add to this notice is the simplifying and clarifying the provisions of the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, which is currently in section eight. And I, I have tonight, Eric Hutchins, and I guess Ashley. Is, are you involved with this too? Probably can't talk, but I have both of them. And I asked them to give us a very succinct rundown on what about the water supply overlay, water supply overlay protection district that has that's different from the protection district that was the original district that they were in, at least Eric was involved with several years ago. And the history of this is, is he, is here. Everyone agrees, including Eric, which I, my hat's off to him, because he was involved with it. Everyone agrees that the Water Supply Protection Overlay District, as it stands now, is is quite, is confusing and there are provisions in there that may not be legal. So what we did last, this is, you know, last year, redrafted it, sent the redraft to the Department of Environmental Protection. They reviewed it and signed off on it. And then I sent it to Eric also, who was very involved in the process then. And Eric came up with some additional ideas. He's extremely knowledgeable about the water supply and the areas, the watershed areas. He came up with some additional provisions which have been incorporated. He and I have met. So this is a, this is a collaborative effort. And I think it's the provision, the, the section is, is far better now than it was before. And we hope to have it, you know, a town meeting. I don't think it's going to be controversial because first of all, most people will have a hard time understanding it. But I, I think it's, you know, it's like mom and apple pie. I mean, who can who can mess with the water supply? So that being said, I have a map up on the screen that I'll, I'll put up. But in the meantime, Robert, if you could unmute Eric and Ashley so they can talk about what this section, as it's been revised.
Great. Thank you, Jason. This is Eric Hutchins, forty-five Pools Lane. And I'm, I'm gonna, I'll just give a quick overview, a little bit, a little bit more detail than what Jason just gave.
But screen, by the way, the map here.
I can see it.
Okay, good. Just to make sure.
Yep. And, you know, so as a little bit of a background, we worked on this a bunch when I was on the planning board ten plus years ago. And then I was on the watershed protection committee simultaneously with the planning board. And we got a couple of grants from DEP, one for the Millbrook Meadow, and then another one from DEP to basically work on water supply protection. The grants were to the DPW. So we worked collaboratively with them. At that same time, we were converting over the zoning map to GIS. That was actually the, the era who we were shifting from the old Mylar copies to GIS. So each version, we were doing updates and catching things and getting things updated. But the bottom line is, your planning board absolutely caught some things that weren't right the way it has been sitting for ten years now. And I was actually quite surprised that, actually, no one had caught them over all these years, but it was good. So so in a nutshell, DEP looked at the, what you submitted to them strictly for what they require and that, you know, which is the minimum. Rockport for over twenty-five years has had a watershed overlay district that encompassed our potential and our, and some of our emergency water supplies that DEP doesn't look at, even though we've used them for drinking. So that was something not got completely missed with the update. The lines were on there on the map, but the language didn't reflect it properly. So anyway, I caught a couple of those things when you put it forward in the springtime and the planning board said, hey, Eric, if you want to work on it for a little bit, be my guest. So I drew in, speaking with Jason, Ashley, Diane, also on the ad hoc water committee. And we went through the language fine tooth, the old language, older language, Jason's language. And we basically worked off of what Jason drafted, which is excellent. What he, Jason took a pile of time comparing the zoning bylaw to the watershed overlay. And there were a lot of things that were just unnecessary. It was too much language and it was not making it easier for people to understand. So we worked with your, your language and only changed it a little bit. We did not revert to the old bylaw. We were able to modify with some slight changes, what you drafted, the planning board last spring that never went, never went forward, modified some of the language. We updated a few of the languages instead of referencing a monitoring station by the USGS that doesn't exist in Rockport, for example, to groundwater table as defined by Mass DEP, just small definitional things. We did not change any of the lines. All of the lines that were on there are the same lines that were on the map for the past twenty-plus years. The legend on the map was not right. I take part of the fault on that from a long time ago. We just missed it. So this was an opportunity so that the different sections on the legend covered groundwater, surface water, and the overall watershed overlay district. I've met with Rob, who's on this call. Rob has looked this over with Ashley, myself, and Diane from a GIS perspective, comparing the lines to what Mass DEP has in the Rockport's lines. When I say lines, I'm saying the delineations. We have lots of delineations of watershed because we got surface water, we got emergency, we've got potential, but they're all on here. We've checked and double-checked. I spoke with Jim Gardner of the DPW because in the end, our efforts at water supply protection are to support our permits that the DPW holds for water supply as well as, I, so I met with Jim and he said, I want you to talk to Aaron, who's kind of their water supply person, expert within the DPW. And with Gary, Gary's concurrence, I sat down with Aaron and Aaron said, absolutely, I believe what you, what you're, you're in making sure is on here is what we want for our water supply protection. Those lines, that legend, and I, and I really feel as though the collaborative effort between the DPW, the planning board's efforts, and the ad hoc kind of giving it another review, we've got a nice piece here now. There were some things in here that Jason discovered by calling DEP, for example. There was old language in here that the Board of Appeals could be convinced to change a line on the map for water supply protection. DEP said, you can't do that without our concurrence. So there's an example of one of the minor changes that tangibly was made. DEP said, you can't do that. And happy to withdraw it. So that was withdrawn. Um, that's it in an overview. We've, we've now looked at this draft map multiple times. We've looked at the language and I've bounced it back and forth with Jason and, and over to DPW and to Ashley a number of times now. I honestly feel that we have, it's not a lot of modifications. It's adding some of these B and C areas to the watershed overlay district that were there before, but fell out of the language. The language has been added. I believe every, it's probably not, but let's face it, every bylaw that ever gets passed, there's still something wrong. But I, I'll be, I feel as though about six different eyes have looked at the map now. We've, we've drafted it, reviewed it, and I feel pretty comfortable that what you've, you've got put together now is a nice piece that will be and I would, for one, reach out to the DPW to make sure that they actually even come to hearing time, they actually take a vote from the DPW to say, we support the planning board. So I've worked on about seven different planning bylaws before with watershed protection. And nothing has ever passed as strongly at town meeting than water supply protection in Rockport. But, um, so I'm, I'm confident it will do well.
Good. I'm glad to hear that. Ashley, do you have anything you would like to add? Is Ashley unmuted, Robert?
Robert just unmuted me. Thank you. I think Eric captured it. Thank you. Really, again, I'm just reinforcing that integrated effort across all of the water stakeholders. So.
Yeah, that's great. I mean, I, I can't say enough about both of you and how, how helpful you've been in a, you know, pretty technical area. You have a lot, both of you have a lot of history looking at this. Just, I'll just say a couple of really quick things. If everyone can see the map here. At the top of the map, it's under surface water protect, there are two areas, wellhead protection areas and surface water protection areas. These are areas that are defined by lines that kind of look like your three-year-old kid went crazy on the map with a crayon or something. But there, they define the, the boundaries of these areas. And and correct me if I'm wrong, both of you, but my understanding is that the DEP cares about the wellhead protection areas, approved zone one and two, and the zone A, which is surface water protection, they, they don't require what had you guys have done, which is an additional level of protection, which is zone B and zone C. They don't require that, but they approve of what you've done here. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Um, in some ways, no. It's, it's actually better than that, Jason. It actually wasn't us. Those areas have been protected all along for about twenty years. So it actually predates all of us on this call. The watersheds actually were in the watershed overlay district before DEP even had some of these regulations a number of years ago. And we dropped them out by mistake through language changes and legend changes. It was just errors. There's no administrative record anywhere that ever said anybody ever wanted to eliminate any of them. We didn't eliminate them. We just, they just kind of got grayed out in our mapping and our legend through, you know, not good proofreading, to be honest with you, not by you guys.
Okay, well, but anyway, there, well, thank you for that. And so this is, you know, one, this was put off last last time, and I'm glad we put it off because we had enough going on, was because, you know, Eric had some comments and they were good comment. And so we thought, well, there's no rush to do this. But, you know, things are happening in the town of Rockport and some of these interior areas, which I think you can see that the green that, especially down below here in the lower part, in the southern, southern part of the town. Where this, these watershed protection areas could become very, very important in the not-too-distant future. No one's been paying much attention to them now, but one of these days, I think we're going to wake up and find out like a property like the golf course, just giving a hypothetical, is up for sale and someone wants to develop it, you know, something like that where we really need to have, we really need to protect our watershed areas with this, with these kinds of laws. So thank both of you and we'll see you on October fourth. We'll need you on October fourth.
I will be there.
Okay.
I say, Jason, I had a question about the, the nomenclature. At the top of the legend, it says drinking water protection. Is that a change? It used to be called watershed protection and now it's drinking water?
I know. That's a good question, Eric. Do you have anything to say about that?
Um, it, it actually is all about drinking water. So that change, actually, I didn't necessarily catch that. But when we needed to add that to grab everything, but, um, it is, it is drinking water. So I actually don't have a problem with that. It's not designed to be an environmental protection by law from a, just a simply a watershed protection. It is designed for drinking water protection. But you do, that is, I didn't, that wasn't done intentionally. I didn't, and actually, in the, Rob actually came up with that language because we needed some language. I'm not blaming him. I think, I think it's okay language because in the end, that is the premise behind it.
Well, let me, let me, I mean, Tom raises a good point. We don't want to confuse people or raise a question, is drinking water protection overlay district exactly the same as the water supply protection overlay district?
Yes.
Just the same way, different way of saying the same thing. And this is a draft map, by the way, folks. So, you know, it's not like, but, you know, it seems to me that maybe and we don't have to do this now, that to, to keep, you know, the apples and apples together here is to change that to the water supply protection overlay district. So somebody doesn't think that drinking water protection is somehow different from, you know, water supply overlay protection. That's just something that we don't have to do it now, but there's something to think about.
Jason, my, my concern was not so much which term was better, but rather that it agree with anything we have in the text of the zoning bylaw.
I'm not saying it's bad. I mean, I, they say pretty much the same thing, but you're right. I mean, we want to, we don't want to have any ambiguity about whether drinking water protection overlay district is the same as the water supply protection overlay district. And indeed, they are the same. So we should call them the same thing. That's no big deal.
Just make them agree. I don't care which one you change where.
All right. Any other comments from any other members of the board? We'll have a public hearing on this October four. So any members of the public will certainly be able to comment at that time if they want. But if not, we'll thank both of you and we'll move on. Hey, no further comments. So we'll move on to the next item. Let me get my stop share here. There we go. Next item on the agenda is member items. Anybody have any member items?
I attended the North Shore Planning Council, thinking they would have something different to, to learn there, but that's actually a different region from our from our our own subregion of MAPC.
Really? I thought we were in that.
No. Oh, I'm sorry. We're in North Shore Planning, we're in the North Shore Planning Council. And this is the North Suburban Planning Council.
Oh, okay. Wow. Oh, okay. Wow. Right.
And they, there's different people, and I tuned in to see if there was anything of interest, and there really wasn't, so. And they didn't want to know what we're doing either, so kind of a dead end.
Well, I will, in that light, I'll forward on to you an email I got from the MHP, which I'm not quite sure at this minute what that stands for. Do you know, anybody? MHP?
MHP?
MBT zoning webinar series. I'll tell you in one second. A second, because I think the other people may be interested in this.
Alphabet soup has gone wild.
Yeah, it really has. It's hard to, hard to keep track of this. Here it is. It's MHP's MBTA zoning webinar series. And they have a series, which I've, you know, I've signed up for. I don't, I don't know whether I'm going to go into it, but it's all about, you know, the, this MBTA multifamily housing initiative. And it looks like it could be very useful. There are actually five different webinars. And why don't I do this? I will share with all of you when we get off this meeting and anybody who wants to can, you know, attend. I, I put them down on my calendar. I'm not sure I'm going to be able to attend all of them, but the ones that I can, I will. And I hope that anybody else will be able to do it. The other thing is that, as you may know, we did, we did do a RFP for the housing production plan. We didn't get any responses, which to me was kind of astounding. We didn't get anybody responding. And I know that a consultant that Harry had been, had talked with was interested in it, and I was kind of surprised that we didn't get a response. But it is going to be re-notice, re-advertised. And if anybody knows a consulting firm that has this capability, they need to apply for this. It's a lot, it's, the town's going to spend, you know, a decent part of the study done. So it would be well worth anyone's while to submit a proposal. That's one other thing I have for a member item. I'm in the bit, I'm in the process of getting the zoning bylaws. The draft zoning bylaws in shape for our public hearing, it's a real challenge. I mean, the more you look at it and the more you find things that, you know, this section should have said this. And it's, it's a challenge, but I am working with a woman, Cindy Balkum, who's a good typist, who understands how to manipulate the word program, who's putting these things. So by the time, by next week, we should have it ready to, you know, ready to distribute to the public prior to the public hearing on October 4th. And that's all I have.
That reminds me, Laura Fillmore Evans had a suggestion about the information for town meetings where they're doing a bunch of different warrant articles. If you could have on, in the heading of each page, which article it's about, because some of these are continued for multiple pages and you get lost as to which article you're in.
Understood. That's, that's a good idea. You know, I have to the warrant. I don't have, we don't have a lot of control of how it looks sometimes. So I just want to, but that is an excellent thought. So you just put a, like, Article G continued or something.
Yes, something like that.
At the page. Yeah, it's an excellent idea. Okay.
And also I remember from, I remember from town meeting, one other item. Ruth George in talking about the CPC approval for Five Granite Street Affordable Housing said, "Upon completion, we would have 4.6%." I don't know if that's a really official number, but that's a good thing to know if we're supposed to have 10.
Yeah, we're, I thought we were down in the three range.
I hadn't really heard an official number, so if 4.6 is it, that's, that's where we are.
I'd be surprised if it's that high, but I think the most important takeaway is that it's better with that project.
Agree.
Okay. That's, oh, one other thing that the lawyer for the parties that have sued the town multiple times, I think his last name is Walsh. I don't recall his first name. I think, what was that?
Michael Walsh.
Michael Walsh. Yeah, I thought it might be that. They, I think, five lawsuits against the town, four of which have been dismissed, one of which is still active. On behalf, one of the town residents who came to meeting, the May 16 meeting, and objected to everything, expect, especially the majority vote as opposed to the two-thirds. He has filed an objection with the Attorney General's Office. I under, I understand that it is directed at that issue. And this is directed at the bylaw that was for the accessory dwelling units and also for the TOVOD around the train station. He didn't file a similar objection for the, you know, the open space subdivision. So the, the time, the Attorney General has asked for additional time to review those, to review his objections to those two, adoption of those two bylaws. The, for the open, open space subdivision, there was no need for additional time. As I understand it, tomorrow, it's going to be, the Attorney General essentially approves it. But the time to sue, to bring a lawsuit about anything that was done or for any of those bylaws has expired. That's gone. So the time for a lawsuit has expired. So this is only objections to the Attorney General. My understanding is that those objections are directed to some constitutional issue over which we have absolutely no control. So we'll see what happens, you know? That's, that's all the news. Any other member items? Okay, any further public comment? Anybody with their hand up, Robert?
Yeah, I have a hand from Laura Kozicek and Toby Arsenio.
Okay, I'll take Laura.
Hi there. Thanks for taking public comments. I just wanted to commend everybody. And I'm sorry that Ashley and Eric are gone, but I wanted to say thank you to Eric and to Jason for all the work on the bylaw improvement and the zoning. It's, it's super important and in my opinion, it's, it's our only climate resiliency and hazard mitigation kinds of things that we have going on right now. So I wanted to ask about if there are any models that you use. I have just, just a couple of things. If you have any models that you were using, that, Jason, maybe you would know, but if Eric used any kind of models for the overlay zoning, I know it had to get vetted through whatever DEP is requiring, but I'm just interested generally in that because our sister communities that are similar, that have probably already done this. I just wonder if that's also helpful in matching the various parameters and certainly the way you title it, because that might also get you in tune with future improvements in, in the, that might be coming down the pike later on. So that was one question about models for that work, or if you just had to come up with this from your own common sense and all that sort of thing. The other question I have, I don't know if I've said this before, but I keep meaning to. I'm super interested in the prospect of, and now I'm speaking, I didn't say my name. Laura Kozicek, 293 Granite Street, sorry. I'm now asking a question about whether or not there would be a possibility of our community having a joint application process for projects as they do in Manchester. So our building inspector works in several other communities, is my understanding. And some other communities do this, where they require all the permitting to happen within, let's say, five days of each other. And then, so that means that there can be that wealth of information sharing and comments that could come from one committee or board to another. I feel that sometimes on the Conservation Commission, information feels very siloed. And often I've seen in the past, over the time that I've been on the commission and before when I was observing it, that there seems to be kind of sometimes a playing off. Oh, well, we already got the permitting here, here, and here. Now we're coming to you, Conservation Commission, and we're expecting this, that, or the other, or it might go the other way. The Conservation Commission might have made their proclamations or their, you know, their decision, and then they will do that same thing in, in other places. So I just wonder, Manchester does this. It might be something to look into. How could we go about having a dialogue about that? So I'll just, I'll just leave it at that. So that would be, you know, with, maybe with the building inspector. The building inspector would cause this to happen, but it would be you. It would be the Planning Board. It would be ZBA. It would be the Board of Health. It would be the Conservation Commission. Anybody who is a permitting body, if there are multiple. Now, I know that, that Eric has talked about this in the past to me, that there is, there are thresholds that trigger that sort of treatment, where, where you guys are involved and help the other boards and committees. However, I think that maybe the threshold is so high that I have never seen it happen.
Yeah, well, let me just stop you right there, Laura. First of all, that's an excellent idea. It's something that we will look into. I'm familiar with it. And in the context of applications, not necessarily in this state, but in other states where it's actually required, that there'll be what they call coordinated review, meaning all the involved agencies are involved in the same time. So that's a, that's a good idea to look at, certainly something to work on going forward. In your last, I think what your first question was, any models? Yeah, we did look, I did look at other communities. I didn't find anything particularly satisfactory. What I did do is I looked at the regulations, the DEP regulations, for what was allowed and what was prohibited under, under the various water supply areas. And I basically tracked those regulations. So their regulations are our regulations. Basic, essentially. And then Eric and Ashley, I think, added some additional regulations, as did I. For example, we extended the, the, the buffer for the watershed areas. If you're in one of the, in, in one of the water supply overlay districts, the watershed area buffer is doubled essentially. That was not in the DEP regulations. That was something that's specific to the town of Rockport. And there were other things like that that were incorporated in, in the town of Rockport. So thank you for your other comment, though. That's, that's something worth, worth looking into. And certainly look, see what Manchester is doing. Toby?
Jason, before we jump to that, just a quick comment on the permit review thing. That is an objective of the Building Inspector's Office and the DPW to have a more collaborative permit process and to be able to review all the steps and various permits associated with the project in a single location, so that other boards have.
Very good idea.
That's kind of what we, that's kind of what we do for 40B.
Yeah, those of us, I haven't had any experience with 40B, but that's, yeah.
Well, essentially, essentially in that case, you give all the decisions to one board with input from the other boards. I don't think that's what we're talking about here, but.
Well, no, I hear with boards with different permitting authority, coordinating the review of a project, which is, it's not an alien concept.
No.
The one that is used a lot, and it's, it's effective. Because as Laura was mentioning, you know, you don't end up having one board look at this. Then they get, the applicant gets a permit from that board and that goes to the other board. The other board doesn't really know what the first board did. And I think, you know, that's, that's something that we could work on in town of Rockport, for sure.
Toby, you're unmuted? Thank you. Toby Arsenio, 95 Granite Street. I too think it would be an excellent idea, and indeed, we had such a, a process in place. And ironically, it was the building inspector, who with town council's backing, managed to scuttle it. And that is years ago. And his contention was that he had to deal with any applications that came across his desk and that tying them in any way to other timelines was an infringement on his both rights and responsibilities. So perhaps that's changed, and I would agree with you. It would certainly be advantageous if it can be done. I don't know. As for presentations at the town meeting, I think Laura Evans' idea is an excellent one. You said that it was not in your control how the warrant was structured. I'm not so sure of that. Certainly, you have some sway and some influence. But one thing that absolutely needs to be done with anything that's long and complicated is that when you're talking about any particular aspect of it, you need to identify not only the chapter and verse, but also the page number. The two are equally important. If you don't, people more often than not are at sea. And, you know, that's a minimal effort. I was interested to hear that you got no responses or the town got no responses on the, on the housing production plan. As I recall, and I very much objected to it, it was yoked with the housing needs assessment. Is that not still the case? It is both?
I don't know what the, the latest version is. I, I think that the idea was to roll them into one, because rather than do them separately, yeah.
Yes, well.
Yeah, you, Harry, I know you have something to say about that.
Yeah, the housing needs assessment is a component of the housing production plan. You have no housing production plan without a housing needs assessment.
Indeed, that makes excellent sense. But as you may recall, I have objected every time it's been referred to. The two are not logically or necessarily yoked together. They're related, but they're different animals. If you're going to go forward with it again, I don't know whether it's, how much control you have over it, the writing of the terms for what's to, we're advertising for. But really, whoever's writing it should hold out for a public presentation, a public hearing, present it to the public when it's in draft form, not final, draft. So that the consultants would appear with your board and the selectmen, whoever is sponsoring it, and answer any questions of fact and come up with responses, either there or subsequently in writing to objections offered. And all of that could, could and should go into an appendix. The objections or suggestions not brushed off, each one of them dealt with. If rejected, the reason why. And two, two things would be gained by that. It's a fair and proper public process. It's not your board or the selectmen who have paid for it. It's all of us, whether or not it's town money or grant money. And the other thing is, if there's any hope of acting on it, I'm not sure. I wish to forward it, but if there is to be any hope of acting on it, the public needs to be informed and buy in on it. So if you have any influence on the writing of the conditions that are to go into it, I suggest, you know, I've spoken about this at Board of Selectmen's meetings, and I am ignored. You would not be ignored.
Okay, well, thank you. I hope to, we hope to see, the board hopes to see. Okay, well, thank you. And I hope to, we hope to see, the board hopes to see the proposal before it it goes out again. So we'll we'll take, keep that in mind. Thank you. Okay, any other public comment? There being none, uh entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Okay, uh moved by Tom. Uh, Harry, anybody seconding?
I did.
Oh, Harry seconds. Uh, before we adjourn, just to remind you that our next meeting uh is not our regularly scheduled meeting. It's our public hearing on October 4. So um we'll see you all then. And with my vote to adjourn the uh meeting, we have a unanimous vote to adjourn and meeting's adjourned as of 7:26. Thank you, Robert, for hosting this. And um take care, everyone. Have a good night.
Have a great night, guys.
Good night. Thanks.